The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 21st, 2017 will now come to order. We will have our prayer and our pledge.
Bow your heads, please. Father, we ask that you bring positive guidance for us in this meeting we have this afternoon. Father, we ask that you put open eyes and open ears and let us see the things that you want us to see and guide us in your direction, in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
May I make the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Do we have any?
Um, we approve.
Second. Okay, if there be no corrections, additions, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minute stands approved. Let's see, consent agenda, we do not have a consent agenda for today, do we, staff?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. Regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the Board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The Board also considers plats. The procedure for the public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. The applicant, staff, the general public, those in support, and in opposition to the request. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than having each individual restate the same information. When addressing the Board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the Board will vote on the request. Zoning request and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on March 9, 2017. All right. Our first item?
Thank you. Consider application P-1702, filed by JPI Development to plat approximately 13.140 acres of abstract 360 A Jordan survey Harrison County into 30 residential lots located on the north side of Page Road across from Victor Drive.
Right. Do we have the applicant present? Please come and give us your name, your address, and tell us about your application.
I'm Troy Maxwell, and I work for Johnson &amp; Pace. Our address is 1201 North Loop, 281 Longview. And as far as I was told, it's basically, the road's nearly finished. We've got a letter of credit in place to finish it out. There's about 100 feet left, and they're supposed to pour that Thursday. And water and sewer, everything's in place, and the rest is hopefully history.
Okay, all right. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to plat a 30-lot subdivision. This is zoned planned development. This came before y'all last year. It is planned development, single-family attached. The plat does comply with the City of Longview requirements. Staff does recommend approval of the request. As Mr. Maxwell stated, we did receive a letter of credit this morning for the remainder of this subdivision. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant at this time? There being no questions, we will now open up the public hearing on application P-17-02. All those, anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing on application P-17-02 is now closed. Do we have discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve application P-17-02. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, application P-17-02 is approved. Next item.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-1701, filed by Scott Zorn, requesting to rezone approximately 3.069 acres of abstract 258 PP rain survey tracks 24 and 26, Section 4, from single-family 2, to general retail located on Porter Lane east of Airline Road and north of East Loop 281.
Okay. Assistant President? Name and address, please, sir.
Scott Zorn, 235 Waters Edge in Longview. Okay, so we have a little 3.1 acre tract here. It's kind of, I don't know if anybody is going to remember where it is, but it's tucked away behind East Texas Credit Union on the loop, and it's bounded by Ryan's that has now shut down, and also a Seventh Day Adventist Church to the left there. What we want to do, it's a very difficult project. It's got a lot of challenges, topographically hugely challenged, no utilities at all to that part of the loop. Up, when you get up off the loop, there's no utilities there. So we have a plan to get utilities, spend a bunch of money, get the project leveled out, and we want to build some very nice, high-end office buildings there. And we're in the conceptual drawing stage of the office property to develop that, and it's going to look really good sitting up on that hill. Currently, there is an old structure there that you can see when you drive by. It's an old house, and the seller that had this Porter estate, he went to school there in second grade. And so, the property's just been kind of, what we call in real estate terms, dirt holding the world together forever. So we intend to put something really, very, very quality, very, very nice up there. Think we can have good luck leasing the product.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mrs. Zorn?
Scott, where would the entrance be going into the property?
It comes up Porter Lane, Tracy.
Okay.
Here again, you see Porter, Porter dumps out on Airline, and once again, the closed Ryan's in the front, and the Seventh Day Adventist Church in the back, and also behind the Seventh Day Adventist Church is the Seventh Day Adventist Church Parsonage.
Do you foresee it being multi-story?
Don't know at this point.
Okay.
But...
General retail zoning does limit the story to three.
And here again, general retail is future, as she's going to tell you next, future land use for this property is general retail, and, you know, we have to know that we're not asking for C2 or anything, to put something disastrous on that beautiful piece of property. So general retail, very protected, office, you know, some of my shopping center material, high-end quality, as you know, I just finished developing the 15 acres across the street. Actually, I'm almost done. And it'll complement that.
Will Porter Street be able to handle fire trucks?
No.
I think that would be addressed through site plan review. Yeah.
That's also the arteries that East Texas Professional Credit Union uses, coming back to their real estate division.
On the backside of where the...
The Porter Street.
And Porter Street is a public, it's a public street. It's a city street.
And I'd say, after my market research, I would say ballpark, 40% of their traffic comes up Porter Lane and dumps in behind the drive-through for the credit union, and like Tim said, the real estate department is on the left, the credit union's on the right. That's all credit union there until you get to Home Depot.
Where does the street actually terminate?
It terminates right there behind the real estate department. But it's platted to go on into the next piece of property. The street is already platted to go in there, it's just not been built yet. And the street could, you know, the street could use, that's no curbing gutter, that's a downside, no drainage, and so, all that'll have to be addressed through zoning after planning.
Through the development process, yeah, all that will be addressed, drainage and emergency access.
Site plan, when they get to that part, does your traffic studies and make sure...
If it warrants a traffic study.
Once and done on the street, in this case. I presume once and done on the street, so if you're telling me 40% of the people are already using it, we're going to increase that, site plan will take those kind of considerations. I'm just asking for my interest.
Yes, sir. Our city engineer will review this through the development process. If it does warrant a traffic impact analysis, one will be requested at that time.
The C property, which is the vacant property between this site and the Home Depot, what's it currently on the... That's...
That was, Tim, that was zoned commercial when they, they had zoned Home Depot for outside display, and they took that property as well because they might have had the opportunity to further expand Home Depot. So that 4.7 acres is heavy commercial.
Right.
I guess that's heavy commercial. Is that C2 or the C?
Yes, sir. It's heavy commercial, C.
Is it?
Yeah.
There was a hotel that's going to be built there at one time, I believe.
That's correct. You're right. But, you know, it's a passover piece of property, and, you know, it could use a development.
Yeah, by understanding on him, though, when he didn't do it, was that the property was landlocked, but Porter Street goes all the way up and meets that property?
The right-of-way does. The pavement does not.
Well, wait a minute now, the pavement goes to the far end of this...
It goes to your property, yeah.
It goes to the far end of where that little house is, it just doesn't go to the...
Exactly, it doesn't go to the landlocked piece of property.
Absolutely correct. So, I mean, it lets you have access on Porter Lane into that little house, and it's had for years.
Do we have more questions for Mrs. Zorn, if, at this time? If not, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from SF2 to general retail to allow for office and retail buildings. Porter Lane is a local road. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? There being none at this time, we will now open the public hearing on application Z-17-01. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing on application Z-17-01 is now closed. Do we have discussion? Is there a motion?
I'd move for approval, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve application Z-17-01. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Application Z-17-01, approved. Next item.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-1702, filed by First Choice Affordable Homes LLC requesting to amend PD-1605 to revise the site plan to allow for adjustments to lot sizes, setbacks for Lot 9, New City Block 3411, and Lot 14, New City Block 3411A, Keybunt subdivision located on Berkeley Street west of Avenue A.
Is applicant present? Would you like to come and give us your name, address, and tell us what we're doing?
Sure. Good evening. My name's Aaron Alston with East Texas Homes. Our address is 914 West Loop 281, and this was a planned development for 14 new homes over in the Cassidy Jones, behind Cassidy Jones in the Keybunt area, and this was something we brought to you guys last year to put some affordable homes in. We had a plat at that time, or a rendering basically, of how we wanted to lay these houses out on the property. During the development process, we came across a few pipelines that we had to kind of avoid, and so that shifted the lot line just a couple of feet on one or two of the lots, and we actually increased the size of the house from what we originally projected, and so that changed a little bit. But I think originally, we had shown a 35-foot setback from the back of the house to the back of the lot. Traditionally, as you know, 10 feet is what most residential lots would have on the backside. We're still well within that, but that's what we're requesting is a 10-foot, just traditional setback for these, although the way the pads are set out now, we'll probably be closer to 20, 22 feet off the back lot anyway. But, and that's really the only two changes, they were just kind of to accommodate the size of the house and the pipeline.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? There being no questions at this time? Thank you. Staff?
Thank you. In the original planned development, as Mr. Alston stated, the site plan featured lots that were approximately 3,600 square feet in size, with a minimum lot width of 40 feet and a depth of 90 feet. It also provided for rear setback of 35 feet, a side setback of 6 feet, with an alleyway traversing the rear property lines. The proposed plan development, site plan, provides for a minimum lot size of 3,500 square feet in size. The lot width will remain the same, however, the depth has changed to 80 feet instead of 90 feet. The applicant will no longer provide alleyways in the rear of the property. As Mr. Alston stated previously, there are pipelines traversing this property, as well as there will be some dedication of right-of-way to the city for Berkeley Street. All other planned development requirements will stay the same, with minimum house size of 576 square feet, maximum height of two and a half stories with a front setback of 25, corner side of 15, minimum two off-street parking spaces in the driveway. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Is this part of the floodplain that goes through there?
No, there is no floodplain on this property.
I'm disappointed that they are giving up the rear drive, private driveway, alleyway. That was just how I'm playing, I thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? There being none, we'll now open up the public hearing on PD-17-02. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward. There being none, application, the public hearing on application PD-17-02 is now closed. Do we have any further discussion, or do we have a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve application PD-17-02. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, application PD-17-02 is approved. Next item, please.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-1703, filed by NVFHC LLC requesting to rezone approximately .96 acres of abstract 262 A Jordan survey track 45, Section 3, from heavy commercial with stipulations to planned development for a package store located at 2,000 Northeastman Road.
Is...
Yes, sir.
Applicant, please give us your name, address, please. Tell us about your project.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Committee. My name is Nishil Patel. My address is 6 Broadl Path, Longview, Texas, 75605. I'm sure you all will be seeing more of me in the future, so I'd like to begin with a quick bio. I graduated from Trinity School of Texas here in Longview in 2006, and Texas A&amp;M University in 2010 with a BS in Biology. My postgraduate plan was to go to medical school. In 2011, while preparing for the medical school exam, I was asked by my family to develop a business in Lone Star, Texas, and at our home, you're not allowed to sit around. So in 2014, while operating the business and shadowing one of the best interventional cardiologists, I made the most important business decision in my life. I left medicine behind and began focusing on my strengths. My passion is in modernizing outdated businesses, as well as creating and developing aesthetically pleasing real estate. Next. Family business. Our family has been in the wine and spirits business for several generations. In 2011, at 23, I transitioned our family from the traditional package store to a more upscale concept, which has been thriving since. I designed Lone Star Liquor and Beer Barn from the ground up and opened the doors in December 2011. Presently, with the help of my family, we're in year six of being in business. Let me tell you what, convincing them to trust me that going above and beyond was the next step in the evolution of our family business really took some effort. Spending an extra buck or two gives our customer a better shopping experience is key in the modern-day businesses. People really do care where they shop. This is Lone Star Liquor and Beer Barn. A next-year photo of our Lone Star location. The bank is to the right, and the post office is that building to the left. It was very important to me to model the store in a manner that, one, it fit well with the town, but one, or but two, it needed to create an atmosphere that would appeal to the affluent shopper. Next. These are interior shots of Lone Star Liquor. When designing the interior, I wanted to use an open floor plan to my advantage. One way to keep theft low is to make more difficult for the thieves to steal. We built all the floor gondolas at 3 feet high and took complete advantage of our walls. We have received countless compliments on our design, but the one that always stands out to us is when families tell us how much they enjoy coming up from their ranches to shop and can just take their time and enjoy their shopping experience. No one has ever felt rushed. This is the view from our neighbor Lone Star State Bank. The concrete path was installed to allow for through traffic going to the post office north of our building, as well as the bank south of our building. So as you can see, not all liquor stores are the same. An upscale wine and spirits business is not what you see in Longview, Texas. Over the last five years, we have had countless travelers ask us to bring a location to their respective cities and towns. Longview is our family's home, and we have wanted to bring a location here for several years. As obvious, there's, there are location requirements by law. You know, we're, as, or, we discussed several properties with Michael Shirley in 2016, and through those conversations, we learned package stores require a C2 zoning in the city of Longview. Package stores are also required by TABC to be within the wet boundary, which is basically south of Hollybrook Drive in Longview, Texas. Lastly, there cannot be an ordinance prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages on the property. Next. So this is an aerial map of 2,000 Northeastman Road. Toward the end of 2016, we found that 2,000 Northeastman Road was south of the wet boundary line and had the correct zoning to apply for the necessary TBC permits. Please keep in mind, we did not purchase this building until November 16th for the rest of this presentation. Next. The TBC application process. We applied for our TBC permits during the feasibility period, which would let us know if a package store would be permitted to operate on the site prior to purchasing the property. As you can see in this picture, issued date, TBC issued our permits November 2nd, 2016. We closed on the property November 16th, 2016. Next. This permit shows on 9/27/16, the city received a $250 payment from Heritage Wine and Spirits for a package store permit issued to address 2,000 Northeastman Road. On September 27, 2016, the city secretary certified that location is in a wet area not prohibited, not prohibited by a charter or ordinance in reference to the sale of such alcoholic beverages. And so you see the first one, certificate of city secretary, signed on the 27th of September 2016. Two, certification from the county clerk that the location for which the permit is sought is in wet area for search license slash permits and is not prohibited by any valid order of the Commissioners Court on the 29th of September 2016. The site was measured by the Police Department of Longview to confirm the nearest church and school are outside of the 300-feet radius, which is required by the TABC. I can't really see that picture right there, but I believe the church is around 400 feet away, and Forest Park Middle School, measuring from the closest corner of their building to our front door, is a little over 1,000 feet. Number four, certified by the Comptroller Public Accounts to make sure that we hold a sales tax permit or are getting one issued. And lastly, we gave notice to the public of Longview via publishing of the notice for application in the Longview News Journal for two consecutive issues. Now, this allows the public a chance to voice their concerns and opinions regarding our application for a package store. Not a single concern was voiced during this period, and the application was sent to the state for final approval. All right, let's discuss the current site and what it is to become. Next. Prior to the city granting Heritage Wine and Spirits a demolition permit, this is what the building looked like. The building was built back in the late 70s and has never really been aesthetically pleasing. Here's a rendering of Heritage Wine and Spirits. Heritage is a modern wine and spirits retailer, designed to elevate the customer's beverage shopping experience. We plan to replace the old asphalt pavement with concrete and bring the driveways to tech stock compliance, increase the green space on the site. Three, the old rotten eight-foot privacy fence that was on the rear of our building has already been replaced and extended along the property line between Applied Consulting and Heritage, as pictured above. Completely overhaul the building. Next. So why are we here today? We have established that the property at 2,000 Northeastman Road, Longview, Texas, was purchased with the intention of becoming the home of Heritage Wine and Spirits, but only after the zoning was verified to support a package store and with the issuance of a TBC permits for a package store. During the TBC application process, the ordinance restricting a package store was overlooked by the city secretary, and the permits were issued to the Heritage Wine and Spirits. Now, this ordinance was placed back in 2001 to protect the value and desirability of the property. However, the landscape has changed much since then, and presently, the best case used for said property is to become the home of Heritage Wine and Spirits. Next. So some of the voiced concerns that I've, that have been brought to light in the last few weeks. One, heritage will be the same as others as far as customers hanging around outside, attracting foot traffic to travel through our property during working and non-working hours, disposing of bottles on adjoining properties. Heritage is not a bar. Our package store permit is an off-premise permit, meaning customers cannot drink their purchased beverages on the premise and/or dispose of the bottles on our property. Second, an open container, as well as drinking and driving, are illegal in the state, so again, there should be no bottles littered on our property. Loitering is not allowed at any of our businesses. In Lone Star, you're more than welcome to use our sidewalk and covered walkway to visit the post office or the bank, but customers are not allowed to just hang about. We should also note, there's a convenience store across the street from this site, 2,000 Northeastman Road, which has been selling alcohol for many years now. Two, the neighbors' employees fear for their safety when working late into the evenings and leaving their place of employment. The privacy fence and adequate lighting will keep our customers and employees safe, as well as our neighbors. We feel the same as other retail establishments and businesses. We want our business to be considered a safe environment. Three, diminishing property values, quite the opposite. Our rendering should prove that. Next. Letters, I have three letters I would like to ask you all to take a few minutes to read. I'm not sure if they've already been forwarded to y'all or not, have they?
Yeah.
And if not, I have them here. One from Carl Stormer, Mayor of Lone Star. Two from Larry Fleet, the police chief of Lone Star. And three from Kathy Tittle, the president of Community Bank and Lone Star State Bank, which is our neighbor. Would y'all like me to read those letters out loud, or will this suffice? Would you all like me to read those letters out loud, or will this suffice? Thank you for your time this evening and allowing me to speak about Heritage Wine and Spirits. As I already said, I have copies of all the documents seen on this presentation if needed. Do you all have any questions for me at this time?
Any commissioners have questions this time for the app?
Will you sell anything besides wine and spirits?
Our focus is going to be on wines, and a lot of stores here don't have that focus. And obviously, we can't just sell wine, so we'll sell some amounts of beer. Craft beers can be another one of our things. We're going to try to push what most people here aren't selling, and we'll have, you know, a moderate amount of spirits.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I drove out there today just to see what the circumstances were.
Yes, sir.
And the neighbor, I guess, to the north of you.
Yes, sir.
Are the ones that are saying that they're concerned for their people that will be leaving. I can see where that's a concern. You say that you believe that through lighting and, well, through the lighting, you're able to light up the area enough to where that may not be a problem.
Yes, sir. So in Lone Star, when we first opened our business, that's right when LEDs start popping out, and we didn't have enough lighting out there. And so we had a lot of our female customers, you know, basically voiced their concerns. Hey, would you all please light up the parking lot? And so that one thing we found was if we put more than needed lighting out there, it makes everyone feel safe. Because as you're walking out of the store, you can see, you know, 50, 75-feet in front of you. Also, I really think the privacy fence that completely separates our two properties now should really, you know, separate the two atmospheres. And I know there's a big safety concern, but if you look around town, you know, you got Harley's, which is right next door to Cavender's and Bodacious. I haven't heard of any problems. I know families, you know, go eat dinner there. I've been there. I don't feel unsafe. Harley's off Highway 80, which we know Highway 80 is a little rough. They have the Good Shepherd, Krista's Good Shepherd has a parking lot right next door to Harley's that female nurses leave and, you know, have to walk to their cars. You know, if we're that concerned, why aren't we concerned about, you know, these businesses' employees? And I think it should be about the same.
Any other questions for the app this time? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're here for staff.
Okay. The property is currently zoned, heavy commercial, with stipulations. The stipulations included that package stores, clubs, taverns, and sexually-oriented businesses not be allowed, be prohibited, and then there was also a stipulation with an eight-foot fence be constructed along the rear property line. This was approved in 2001. In 2000, going back a little further, in 2000, a rezone request was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to rezone this property to heavy commercial for a package store. During this time, staff did make a recommendation to approve the request because it complied with the future lane use map and comprehensive plan at the time. Later in 2001, the applicant had another buyer looking at this piece of property and decided to, again, try to request a rezone of this property to C2 with the stipulations. The applicant actually made the application with that stipulation that the package stores, clubs, and taverns and sexually-oriented businesses be prohibited. Also, at that time, the property owner and the applicant agreed to deed restrict the property with this stipulation. The current applicant did apply for a TBC permit for a package store at the location in 2016, and it was granted by the city secretary's office with the planning and zoning signing off on the permit in 2006. Staff later reviewed the maps, and there was no mention of the stipulations on the property in question. In the past, some zoning restrictions have not been recorded and reflected on our map. It is not best practice to do conditional zoning. That is why staff does recommend when we put conditions on zoning requests that we come back before you with a plan development. In November 2010, or in November 10, 2016, the current owner did set up a pre-development meeting with staff. After that meeting, at some time, the neighbor, one of the neighbors did notify staff that there were deed restrictions on this property. After the adjacent property owner, one of the neighbors notified staff, staff did notify the applicant or the developer of these deed restrictions. During discussions, later discussions, it was brought up that it was part of the rezone request in 2001, and therefore, staff did do more research, and we looked up planning and zoning minutes and city council minutes as well as ordinances to verify that the stipulations were indeed part of the zoning request in 2001. The applicant is requesting to rezone the plan development, to plan development heavy commercial for a package store. The applicant has stipulated that sexually-oriented businesses and taverns not be allowed in this location with this plan development request. He has also provided an eight-foot solid wood fence along the rear and side property lines. He is proposing to utilize the existing building and build two small additions to the building, as you'd seen in his presentation. The total size of the building will be approximately 5,200 square feet. The applicant has already removed asphalt to provide additional landscaping to the site. He will also remove a driveway in order to come compliant with driveway standards. Prior to 1978, the zoning ordinance did not have a package store use or definition. A separate charter of the Code of Ordinances called Alcoholic Beverages allowed liquor to be sold in retail establishments. In 1978, a use category and definition was created for package stores, which required them in heavy commercial and central business and industrial zoning. Since 2001, factors have changed since the last request was made for this property. There is no longer a child recreation venue directly next door. There is a school near, as Mr. Patel has stated. However, it is 900-feet away, measured from property line to property line, and significantly farther when measured door-to-door. We have evaluated similar locations within Longview, and it appears that this location is similar in nature with adjacent C2 residential and school. There is a package store on Loop 281 directly adjacent to Wildwood subdivision. There is another one on Alpine Road directly adjacent to Paperstone subdivision, as well as being across the street from a school. After discussions with the par officers, they have stated in their opinion that package stores do not create more crime in areas that they are located in. Package stores, as Mr. Patel had stated, are highly regulated by the state of Texas. Eastman Road is a principal arterial roadway, which are appropriate for commercial-type uses. And staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for staff?
Was any of the restrictions from the real estate company on the deeds?
They were part of the deed restrictions, yes. Where it prohibited sexually-oriented businesses, package stores, it was part of their deed restrictions.
What happened with the miscommunication between that and by the time that he was talking to us about putting the store in?
I'm sorry.
I think there was a period where he didn't know that there was restrictions on it.
Yeah, we did not know that there were restrictions on the zoning and restrictions, deed restrictions. After, I think, the neighbor notified us, and we had further discussions with his design professional, it was brought to our attention that it was part of the zoning restriction, and that's why staff did further research.
So what sort of, has the city attorney looked at this? What sort of liability do we have if we have given the Patels written approval?
The only thing that they've been issued is a TBC permit through the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission. We have not issued any building permits other than, I think, I believe, the demo permit we issued.
Okay.
What was it that he showed us from the city secretary?
That is just them, I think, what his PowerPoint said was that it was saying that they were, yeah, certify that they are in a wet area, that they're designated wet.
The county gave him the wet. Go back to the one above that.
Yeah, the city secretary did sign off on the permit to sell in that location, based on, and I think as Angela stated, based on confirmation from the zoning department that it was zoned appropriately.
Here, we'll just give them the packets.
Angela, can the city override the deed on the real estate side?
I believe they've requested through their attorneys to have those deed restrictions removed, double E's.
Did you get an answer, Ms. Murphy? Are you okay with that?
I don't know that I have an answer, but.
And I don't think we can probably give an answer to that particular question at this time.
Thank you.
Has anyone business with the north of there?
We have received a letter from them, and I believe it's in your packet, as far as opposition to the.
So Angela, you're saying that the deed restrictions have been removed?
Yes, the applicant.
Is that what you're saying?
It's in there.
They have deed restrictions in the very last page. And that's on page three of the TBC off-premise prequalification packet.
So Angela, what exactly could this businessman have done differently to try to find out that there was a restriction on this property if you didn't even know it was on there?
It was listed in the deed restrictions.
Okay.
Yeah. Those restrictions were listed in the original deed restrictions. And I think that's, I think if you look back, looking back at the minutes, I think a lot of times, those restrictions, that's why we do plan development. And in this case, they didn't, but then the applicant stated to ensure proper protections, they, the applicant actually said, "We would put it in the deed restrictions," and they did at that time in 2001.
But when a new owner came, they can remove those deed restrictions.
And they did.
And they did.
Yes.
So now they're.
In January.
Okay.
Of this year.
You're going to have to come to the microphone, and we'll have to recognize you.
Sorry, initial Patel.
Okay.
So the deed restrictions, when we got wind of them, the title company, it was a big mess on that as well. They weren't actually pointed out to us. So whenever we found out from Angela that there was restrictions, we went digging with our attorneys, and we did find three, basically two owners from when we bought it, that the deed restrictions were put on there. We took care of it as soon as possible, but the deed restrictions never said that there was an ordinance that went with the deed restriction. So once we took care of the deed restrictions, we thought it was a done deal. And that's when we found out after the fact that there was an ordinance and the deed restriction came from the ordinance. So there's nothing for us to know. It was like looking for a needle in a haystack for this ordinance.
Any other questions for the applicant regarding this time?
Okay.
Thank you. Shall we move forward with the public hearing? And we can still have some more discussion afterwards if that's okay?
Please.
Okay? All right. We will now open up a public hearing for our application PD-17-03. I have three cards submitted here, speaker cards. We might have more people than that present who want to speak, who didn't submit a card, and we will take the time if you wish to speak, because that's why we're here. But our process is, we like to get the speaker cards, but that doesn't mean you can't still speak, okay? I just want you to understand. So, that being said, when you come to the mic, please give us your name and your address, because I don't have the card, and we need it for the record. All right. We will now open up the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward.
My name is John Thurman. I live at 507 Drake Boulevard in Longview. I also drove by that facility today, like you did, sir. And I didn't see anything there that was any different from any other place. And whenever I read the paper on the issue here, the only thing I could see was the deed restriction issue, and it seems to me like that's kind of been addressed in here. The reason that I'm speaking is because I'm a taxpayer here too, and as we all are aware, the internet's killing us on our tax base. We all have to find some way to continue our tax base. The objections that are listed here from the individual that is just north of that area, I don't totally understand. I mean, I appreciate that he cares about his employees. I really, really do. I think it's based more on emotion than it is fact, because the facts are simply printed in the paper. If they're true, the police department has already provided reports that there is no increase in crime in those areas. I looked at the lighting. I'm retired from the state of Texas. I was a surveyor for state and federal facilities, and these are the types of items that I looked at during my professional career. The lighting that set the individual that's just north of him in the parking lot is more than sufficient for that parking area. And you're going to have added lighting. You have a street light directly in front of the new business that the applicant is submitting for now, which is going to provide lighting. He's not a bar. He's not a club. He's not going to have people hanging out there drinking and making more noise. You have directly across the street a convenience store that already sells beer and wine. So any objections to beer and wine, again, in that area should be null and void because it is in a wet area. It's already been approved. I can understand, I can definitely understand why somebody would object if they're right next to it, if they don't really stop and look at the facts of the matter. I've listened to every one of you back here, and every one of you were asking a lot of questions about this, and I can definitely understand why. As a citizen, as a tax-paying citizen, I absolutely see zero, zero reasons for not approving this, based on the fact of what Ms. Chow said right there, and also based on what he said, Mr. Patel said, that their lawyers have already cleared this deed issue out. If the objections that you're going to view are going to be based on the individual that has his business north of there is going to suffer, I don't see that. I think that's actually going to increase it. I worked just right down from that for 17 years. I drove by that area all the time. To me, it's good that it's starting to come back up, because several businesses just a little north of there have gone out. Some of them have gone down. Longview is a good city. I came out here in 1988, and all I heard was Tyler's this way, Longview's this way. It's like Dallas and Fort Worth battering back and forth. You have to have businesses to grow. You have to make changes to grow within reason. I see nothing that has been presented in the paper. I see nothing that has been presented here today that would be any reason for denying this man his permit to open his store. Thank you very much for the time. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Hello, my name is Suzanne Smith. Address is One Daisy Court, Longview, Texas, 75604. And I would like, I did not come prepared this evening to formally address you, but what I'd like to tell you is, I'm a local real estate broker in town, and just coming from the stance of what else could he have done? and just coming from the stance of what else could he have done? If you were in his shoes, and you went and you bought a building, and you did your due diligence, and you looked through every avenue possible that you could to make sure that you could ensure that you could do the type of business you wanted to do, and then now are faced with the current challenges of, okay, now I have this building. What am I going to do with it if I can't do with it what I had, its intended use? I personally know this family. I know everything they do is first class. First class. We have a young businessman who is trying to improve the quality of our footprint here in Longview. As you can tell, he came up here and was well, very well-prepared. They want nothing but to improve the quality of life and the quality of scenery here in Longview. I want to just say, as a taxpaying citizen, as a business owner of this town, I 100% fully support him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support? There being none at this time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Gene Gallion, 1308 New Forest, Robin Wood, Longview. I'm speaking for the residents of Robin Wood, which is at Le Duke and Tryon. And as a business analyst, there's advantages and disadvantages to any new business. And this is a personal opinion. I think it's a disadvantage to put a liquor store in that area for a number of reasons, and I'll try to cover most of those. A couple of years ago, and they've mentioned it, the convenience store, Pennies, at Eden and 259, they applied for a liquor license. And we spoke out against it. And fortunately, the city and the PSE Commission denied them the right for hard liquor, which we were very appreciative. As you know, all of you got the letter from Applied Consultants, the business that they're talking about north of the store. When they came and, excuse me, when they came and looked at the city, and when they did their due diligence, one thing they said was, "Will there be sexually oriented shop or liquor stores?" or something like that. And we convinced them, "No, that there would not be." Well, in the letter that you all got from the president, saying that if a liquor store does go in there, that they will break their lease and move to another city, and we'll lose 30 jobs. And the gentleman has talked about Lone Star this and Lone Star that. Maybe Lone Star needed to drive through Liquor Barn, because it's a small community. I, I just don't see that we need one in this area, and I'll give you a couple of reasons. There's a large apartment complex right across the street from it. A few years ago, two guys from that apartment complex came into our neighborhood and raped and killed a lady while her daughter was upstairs. And I don't know if they were drinking or what, but there is crime in that apartment complex. Now, if they don't have a car, and there's not a liquor store close by, a hard liquor store close by, most likely, they're going to stay at home and not do the drinking. And if they don't have a car, and there's a liquor store across the road, it'll be very, very easy for them to walk across the street and buy liquor, and our crimes will go up. We feel that they will. And I know he said that they don't allow drinking on the property. Well, if a vagrant gets $10 in his pocket, and he walks up there, and he buys him a bottle of hard liquor, and he goes out around the side of the building and drinks it, I don't think they're going to be able to watch every person that comes in the front door or goes out the front door. So I think we have to look at a couple of things. I think it would increase crime. The safety of our area. Now, here's a company that had looked all over the country for a place to build their offices. And you had that skating rink there that had been vacant for 14 years. And they come in, and they do their due diligence, and there was no sexually oriented stores coming in, no liquor stores coming in, none of this. So they make the commitment. They invest their time and their money. And then we come up and going to put a liquor store right next door to them. They're going to break their lease. They're going to move to another city. We're going to lose 30 jobs. So that's my spiel. That's how I feel about it. I'm totally against it. The people of the Robin Wood subdivision are totally against it. So, questions?
Questions for the speaker?
The liquor store across the road, it just sells beer.
Beer and wine?
Beer and wine.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Lonnie, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Scott Zorn, again, 235 Waters Edge. It's not very often you guys see Scott Zorn come up here and talk down a project, because I am pro economic development. I am a developer, been one for a while now, and I'm loving seeing some young guys come up that can kind of take the mantle and keep this thing going, because we've got to have these guys. Risks are capital. Risks are ideas. Hopefully, it's successful. I have a problem here with, first of all, I'd like to explain. There are two things at play here. There's a deed restriction. Deed restriction, and there's a zoning restriction. A zoning restriction triggered the deed restriction. Basically, a deed restriction is basically the holy grail of real estate. I want to go invest in some property. If it's a C2 zoning, which this property is, and there's no zoning restriction against sexual oriented businesses, guess what? I have no protection. And consequently, I can't sell a tenant on any protection. By the way, I don't, I don't run the business for Applied Consultants. I lease to them. They're my tenant. And I, I brought them, I brought them from going to another city. We were looking in Kilgore real heavy, and I brought them over here, promised them the moon, and they went with me on it. And let me tell you how they went with me. And let me give you a little, just a real small cliff note. Harry Fox, a local businessman, bought this property in 94. And he bought it because he wanted investment property. Louis Morgan Drug was in the property. Louis Morgan was his tenant for a number of years. Eventually, they consolidated downtown. Things rocked along all the way till 2001. In between that period, he had a liquor store come to him, Mr. Fox did. He came through all this, planning zoning, all the city council, it was shot down. All right, so that goes away. Time rocks on. I get involved in the property. I find out, C2 zoning, I can do something with that. That's a good zoning. No, I'm sorry, general retail. We're getting to C2. Don't get ahead of myself. So, I have, I come to past 01, before Harry Fox sells a property. He comes and gets the C2 zoning. Now I have a real interest, because now we have C2 zoning. However, we have a zoning restriction with, with Ms. Choi, Reggie. Sexually oriented businesses, package stores, liquor stores, clubs, et cetera. Nothing any of us want next door. So I said, "You know what? Give me that zoning restriction, and I might can do something with this." So I go and pull my zoning restriction out of my file. I have it right here. I have the nice little zoning restriction. So he, I'm not buying the property, but I have all my paperwork from 2001. I go to my file, pull that out, and I'm like, "How can you remove a zoning restriction?" Now, a deed restriction's one thing. Deed restriction has a willing seller, a willing buyer. A willing buyer goes and the willing seller says, "Yeah, I'll wipe out the deed restriction. I want to get some money here." Zoning restriction's a whole nother animal, which is still in play on this property. So that, so that's the history of the property. It got shot down once in 2001, and we have a zoning restriction in place. This is what I make my living on. This happened to me in, in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, on a shopping center own. They tried to bring this and shoot down a zoning restriction next door to me. They shut everything down, brought in a consultant so they could very well familiarize the planning and zoning and the council on where removing zoning restrictions take a city. It takes them down a very slippery road. Because now you can just start removing the zoning restrictions if you can run through this planning and city council again. And I'll wind up with a sexually oriented store next to me, or a liquor store. So to make, long story short, 2015, I keep Applied Consultants from leaving the city with these 35 jobs. Keep them here, applied, is owned by a sister company or a, a big merger acquisition out of the East Coast. It's called Nautica. Nautica comes down, and the local president is Matt Cheney. Nautica comes down, looks at what Matt has selected, this 20,000-foot skating rink. I give them all the CAD plans, designs. This is what I intend to do to make you my tenant. Wonderful. The Vaca lawyers comes down. They do their research. They find out there's a C2 next door. Flags go up. They don't want their people next to C2. They don't want them next to liquor, obviously sexually oriented business. They don't want any of that. They want clean. They have a lot of women working in this building. And as you know, we've made a very, very, very beautiful building out of this property. Now, we're going to waltz in here with the opportunity of throwing this away. After I made the investment, and these attorneys never would have signed this lease had I not produced this out of my old file. I produced a zoning restriction. Now we're all at comfort that there's never going to be a liquor store, or the other things I mentioned. In this property, they signed the lease. Great for Scott. Great for Longview. Great for Applied. Got a wonderful building. And while I appreciate young developers, this is not the place for a package store. And this is not our leaders, commissioners, and staff jerking restrictions out that I, I make my living on, restrictions. You can't just take a restriction and throw it away. The restriction's on for life. And it will continue to invest money in the city. If I don't have restrictions, I'm not going to buy a skating rink that's been sitting there 14 years. I don't know the uncertainty of the area. I got to know the certainty of the area. Zoning restrictions produce that for us. So just don't get confused on deed restriction and zoning restrictions. Two different things. Deed restriction, you can throw that away. Zoning restrictions, that's the holy grail. So I would appeal to you to, to turn this down, because if we don't, we're going to open all kinds of cans of worms going forward in our city. Does everybody understand kind of the history of how this property got to be? Or have any questions possibly?
You are still the property owner. You actually are the property owner there, right?
I own the big building to the north. Correct. I'm the landlord.
Okay, you're the property owner.
That's right.
The company is leasing from you.
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
That's right. And, and were it not for this piece of paper here, there would be no company in that building. Big, big conglomerates don't operate this way. They're not going to come to a city with no absolute on what's going next door. That's why we have zoning. That's why we have zoning. It was done in 2001. There's no way we need to redo it. It's already been done. We've made huge capital investments in the area. We've got dusted-on lighting. We've got flagpoles lit up. We've got downlighting, landscaping. We've got a beautiful product there for Longview. And it was a nice store for 14 years. That's my deal. If anyone has any questions, that's kind of the history of the property. And I had this in my file, and I sold this big company to stay in Longview off this deed, off this zoning restriction. Off this zoning restriction is what I sold that deal on.
Any questions?
Thank you. You bet.
Anyone else speaking in opposition?
My name is Robert Johnson, 414 Wayne Drive. And I'm the pulpit minister for the Longview Church of Christ, which is within this area we're talking about. And I have some of my members who accompanied me because of their concern over what's getting ready to happen. I'd like for us not to think about Highway 259 going in front of this property. I would like for us to think of the community that this property will be set in. Our church is one of those properties, and has been there for a long time. It was a Baptist church before, in 1992, we purchased that property and built it. We just went through, due to a tornado, hit our property in 2014. Just went through a remodeling, which we think makes the whole property in that area look a whole lot nicer. Wish, uh, wish the nursing home would do something. But we've done our part on trying to, to make it more appealing to individuals to want to come and be a member of our congregation. And I will tell you, in 45 years' worth of preaching, package stores and churches don't go together. You can talk about the other businesses and say it'll be good for this or good for that. Churches, and, and forget the 300 feet or whatever it is, I'm talking close proximity. People like to have a residential feel. People like to feel they're safe. People like to feel this is a place where their kids can get out and play and enjoy being there. And I have worked in congregations that have been in areas with these kind of businesses, and it's a mission work. It is a struggle. Families want to feel safe. Families want to have a family atmosphere when they move in. But it's not just us. I'm thinking of this, of the business that has gone in where the skating rink was at. I'm thinking of the homes that would be behind this business. I'm thinking of those brand-new homes that are coming close to our property, which they look great. They're fantastic. They're residences in this area. And I'm not sure the builder of those homes or people looking at those homes would be very excited, thinking just a little bit over is a package store. And there is a school not far from there either. It was gaining a residential feel, and now we're trying to turn it back into where the property that's not driving by on 259, but the homes and the people that are behind that property, of what that does for us, and how that kind of destroys that feeling of, of being a residential section. And if it was such a great deal, I don't think any of us personally would love to buy a home right next to a liquor store where we are going to raise our kids. We don't do that. We don't put them in those areas. There is a reason for that. And yet we have all those new homes going in behind it, not on the 259 side, but on the Alpine side. So I'm thinking about all the people up and down that street, and we've contacted those people. We've knocked doors. We've talked to them about church activities and trying to get them involved. It, it's a family kind of feel that we would still like to have an outreach to. We'd like to attract people from the community at large to come into worship with us. But we're wondering what the potential for that will be if this is what happens, and this is the view that people have for that. You've probably seen me here before. I was here when we were considering what was going to happen with the property Mr. Zorn put in. We reached an agreement. They put a zoning restriction on that. It's a beautiful building. I've talked to the manager there, and I understand his concerns. There are concerns. We have folks that sleep on our property. One of them sleeps behind the building and plugs his phone or laptop into our external outlet, so I guess that's okay. But we're concerned, is that going to increase? It may not happen on the property where the package store is at. What happens once they walk off of that property? There's lots of other properties where they could drink if they so desired to do that. But we got assurances that the city was concerned about us being a viable work in that area, because we got that zoning restriction there. And then with the Exxon, we, no, no, that's, wouldn't benefit the city. But now, just next door to the property where there was a zoning restriction, we're saying, "No more zoning restriction." And I'm just speaking from the heart right now, okay? I feel betrayed. If this goes through, it feels like what we did there and what was done with the Exxon in trying to- in trying to build this area up for the sake of those new homes being built and a school and the homes that already exist there and our church, it just feels like we're being betrayed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers?
I would like to state four.
Please be brief, because we've already gone past the four.
All right. I'll be real short. My name is Alan Fenwick. My address is 3807 Falls Creek, Longview, Texas. What disturbs me is the people in opposition are talking about changing zoning. Well, changing zoning happened to three prior things, especially for that man there that was complaining. He, why does he want zoning changing? Because he says, "Oh, it's written in God that it's ruining the country because we change stuff." Well, there's things change. I don't know if it's good or bad for him to, but, you know, due diligence, work, calling something, well, 30 people are gonna leave. Well, are they really? That's a threat. You know, people don't like to be threatened, you know, like, "Well, if you ain't gonna do this, I'm gonna do this to you." Well, that don't sound right. That doesn't sound like a justified cause. It sounds like more personal whining to me. And I'll just leave it at that. But, you know, that's what this is all about. And you approved three others prior for zoning changes. And these guys are crying, "Well, we don't want zoning changes." But what happened? They weren't crying about the other three. They weren't saying, "Oh, no, we don't want that happening, it's gonna ruin our lives." I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'm gonna allow you, and then that's it, because we've already gone past the four, and you guys were present. So come on, please hurry.
My name's Linda Tolliver. I live at 1723 Rainbow Drive, Longview, Texas. And I would just like to bring it to everyone here's attention that there are no restrictions for churches or schools for any of the other package stores as well as this one. Plus, you have to be 21 by law to enter a package store. And those are the points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in opposition?
My name is Sue Wilson. I live on Lover's Lane here in Longview. I'm a little confused, and I just wanted to ask a question. Did I understand that this permitting process got to this point because the city secretary overlooked the zoning that was there? Did I misunderstand?
So in 2001, stipulations were put in place for the zoning. At the time that Mr. Patel did apply for a liquor license, Planning and Zoning did approve the liquor license for that location. Yes, it was overlooked at that time. However, through adjacent neighbors, the adjacent neighbors did make staff aware of the deed restrictions as well as the zoning stipulations that were put in place in 2001.
But the permitting process might not have come to this point had that not been overlooked? Is that correct?
The liquor license was issued. I'm trying to answer your question. I know, so the liquor license was issued, but at the time, there were plans submitted to the city, and all of that came to a halt when staff became aware of the zoning restrictions.
Thank you.
All right. We will now, there being no other speakers, we will bring the public hearing to a close. We do have quite a few people here, and we do ask that if you were the large group, you have a representative. So what I'm gonna ask is, all those who are in support of this, would you stand so we can just get an idea? If you're in support, stand. Okay. Thank you. If you're in opposition, stand. Thank you. All right, Commission, do we have questions or discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is a Michael question. Just to be completely clear on what we are doing here. The current zoning, C2 with stipulations.
Correct.
The request is a plan development. The plan development would remove the restrictions imposed by the C2. Correct?
Their application for PD would is to remove the package store restriction. It would, and Angela kinda talked about the difference between zoning restrictions and plan developments. Plan developments go a step further. They go beyond just the zoning uses. They actually go to the overall use of the property, to the details of building footprint, building size, parking lot layouts. They go through all those details, as y'all are well familiar with. And knowing the history here, they did leave all of the other restrictions that had been put in place previously, because that is not their intent. Their intent was to do a package store.
But the rezon would take it effectively from C2 with three stipulations to PD with two stipulations?
Essentially, yes.
Is that the request?
Yes. Yes.
Why are we switching from C2 to plan development? For that to happen? Are we switching from C2 to PD so that we can make this happen or not make this happen? Why are we changing that?
They approached us, so when we realized that there was an issue with use restrictions. And I am not an advocate for use restrictions. As Angela alluded to, it's not best practice, because things like this happen where previous administrations, they're not recorded properly, or that information gets lost in paperwork. That's where we use the plan development tool, so that when you look on a map or you look in the information, it gives you reference to a file instead of reference to a cookie-cutter zoning. And so that is the purpose here, is instead of just removing the restrictions and leaving it as heavy commercial, we felt it would be more appropriate for safeguard in the future to do the plan development status. And then, within plan development, you can kind of pick and choose and do all of your restrictions through that process, which they've chosen to do with those restrictions. But it also locks them into the footprint and to the details that they've given us as well. And we could go a step further if y'all chose to. The building renderings that they provided, we generally don't, but we could make that a part of the restrictions as well, to give further safeguards that we kinda know what the look and feel's gonna be if that were a concern or for consideration.
If this property were sold by the applicant, what happens then? Still plan development, package store?
If y'all approved the plan development, package store, and council approved it, then that building footprint could be used for an additional package store down the road with a different owner or any of the other uses in heavy commercial, excluding the SOBs and the taverns and so forth.
They would have to go through the same process we're going through now if they wanted to turn it into a tavern.
That is correct.
It would all come back through, just as it's coming back through now to be a package store.
That is correct.
Any other questions? I wanna make sure that we, wherever you're clear.
What you just mentioned is worth noting. On the appearance of the building and the lighting, the opportunities to the security department, that's my biggest concern. Those are items that could be added back, but it'd be something that had to be presented tonight. It's either now or never.
We can do a couple of things. If y'all had reservations about some of the stipulations or wanted more detail, you could provide that feedback, and that could be brought back at a later date. The applicant did present renderings in his presentation. Y'all could make that a part of your recommendation for approval if you so choose to. Because we have that, we know what it looks like, we could make that a part of that PD. Along with other things, you know, you can add conditions to PDs. The good thing about it is, we can add it into the file, and it's not just an attachment to a cookie-cutter zoning.
My situation with the nursing homes up there, which no one really knows what's gonna happen with it, but if someone was to buy that nursing home and wanted to do the same thing, if we opened the door here, that would give them the ability to do that there as well?
Zoning, rezoning is an opportunity afforded to every property in the city. We do that every month. Zoning is not set in stone. We have a process to rezone, and what we look at is, we look at adjacency, we look at future land use map, because trends and things change. Our future land use map changes. And y'all hear us talk about, month after month, how areas change and, you know, for better or for worse. That's why we have that zoning process. We go up with zoning, we go down with zoning. We have traditionally a lot of properties that look to go up to heavy commercial. That was the, you know, it's the property next door, if you remember. That was the request that they submitted initially, was for heavy commercial. And that got us kinda talking, the conversation about, you know, the liquor store in this area. You know, that's when the church came out, so we don't want the liquor store at our front door and so forth. And, you know, there was the concern about not being able to do the things that commercial allows, and that's why we went back and did the plan development there, because we recommended not doing zoning stipulations, because those get lost in the shuffle. Little would we know that that was the case next door. But the property next door, the heavy commercial, that provided the adjacency to even allow the request last time.
Additional discussion? Questions?
For where we have property with packaged liquor now, and I gotta go back to the loop, because that's the one that's there. I'm gonna ask your memory to test me. What's that zone today? Was that ever a stipulation? Because we have a church close, we have a dealership, we've got restaurants, we've got people. I'm just, there was discussion, are we making a precedence, or are we also following the path of other locations? I understand this is a complicated, sensitive issue, but if we took the concept of, I wanna make sure we're being fair to all, when that was done on the loop years before, what's that zone today? Is that a PD or is it a?
No, it's heavy commercial.
With a, I mean, I was, I've got Cavenders, I've got Harleys, I've got Bodacious.
Some of that property.
How did that happen and this is not, or you're going to? Yes or no?
And I can't answer all of that, because that was way before my tenure, and I've not researched. I do believe some of that property is deed restricted, but I think it's because of competition more than anything else. I can't verify that, but that's what I've heard. But yes, it's zoned heavy commercial, it's in a corner of the wet/dry boundaries. You do have a lot of retail around it. So, you know, from our standpoint, it is a very similar situation. You've got very vibrant retail, you've got high-end residential literally on the back door. The houses are probably closer than the houses that are on Eden to this. You know, so you've got a lot of the same situations. I don't think they have, and as Angela alluded to, we talked to the par officers to kinda get an idea, because generally you hear, you know, foot traffic, loitering, all that kinda parking lot hangaround type issues. And we just don't, we're not seeing that with very similar situations. Now, you talk about Highway 80, that's a whole different situation. You know, and then you get to the chicken or the egg. What is, was the problem there is the liquor store there, which is causing it? And I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that. You know, I don't think you would have that problem here, but I'm not gonna say that you're not. We're just looking at other scenarios. We've got, Angela mentioned the one on Alpine, that's building a new store there. You had residential and a school choose to go near that, because that store, that liquor store's been there for a long time. And the residential next door and the school across the street, the charter school, chose to locate near that. So you've got other situations. You know, you can look at studies all day long, but you have to look at, you know, is that apples to apples or apples to oranges with Longview? And that's situational around town, too, because there's other liquor stores in town that probably, you couldn't say the same thing about.
Yeah, I'm gonna say this to the, to the Commission. I'm gonna be voting in opposition to this, and I'm gonna tell you why. I worked through the case that brought the company that Mr. Zorn was talking about there, worked with the church, and we worked with them to get that worked out so that we could turn that skating rink into something good. And we fought down some things that weren't, and we gave them some understandings. And they had some understandings about what that area would be like. And because I was part of that, I can't in good conscience not stay with that. Now, you make your decisions, but we, when we did it, we did it, and they had the understanding that there were restrictions in place next door. And that was a concern for them. And we said fine, and they were happy because it was, and they came with that understanding. So, yeah, we can talk about what's out on the loop. That was a long time ago. What I'm talking about was just a few months ago. So that's where I am on it, and, you know, we can, we can keep talking, but at some point, we gotta vote.
I'd like to ask Mr. Shirley to restate staff's opinion.
Yes. And as Angela stated, you know, we went back through all the case files, you know, looking at the history, you know, the, we learned of the deed restrictions from an adjacent property owner and so on and so forth. Even previously, staff had recommended approval back in 2001 because of the future land use map and the land use and the zoning. And so based on those facts, we're recommending approval, based on the land use adjacencies and the fact that it's not an incompatible use with next door. That's what we look at when we make a recommendation. You know, TABC has rules in place to protect schools, churches, daycares, and other things. They far exceed those regulations. Certainly, cities have some rights to further restrict through zoning and so forth, but we feel like they've met all those basic things. And from a land use standpoint, where we look at trying to negate nuisances with incompatible land uses, I don't feel like that's the situation here, so we do recommend approval.
I'm struggling with this a little bit. I used to work in a business that dealt with these types of businesses, just as a high-dollar, high-end, and I don't have any idea whether there would be a problem. And I think that that's incumbent on the manager or the owner of the business to make sure that that's not a problem. And unfortunately, we can't make everybody happy tonight. And so that's where I'm at. I just, I'm struggling with that part.
I gotta state this. It's a sad state that we had to get to this point tonight, because it does put us as a... commission, I feel very uncomfortable. There's no sense pointing the finger at anyone without a few pointing back at me. But I hate the process that we've got two businesses side by side wanting to succeed and emotions are high and this is an emotional issue. Sadly, I hope in the future that we do a better job of making sure that these types of ordinance are, and it's nobody's fault, it just happened, it just fell in the cracks because it puts developers versus developers, neighbors against neighbors, taxpayer against taxpayer. You said it well, chief, somebody's gotta win, somebody's gotta lose. But I think a statement needs to be made, we need to do our diligence. Gentlemen, I hate it for this to come to this because it puts a lot of pressure. I'm not comfortable with the whole situation because it has put emotions where it should be business, the business of our city. That's my statement.
Is there more discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'm going to move for approval with the stipulation that the elevation be added to the requirement. Do you want that? The elevation?
The building elevation.
Yeah, the building elevation that was presented.
Okay, let's make sure, well, I don't have a second, so, before I-
We explain with that because I wanna make sure it's clear on the record.
Okay.
We're both making, we're looking at a motion, taking the renderings of the drawings to make sure that that professional look stays there, is that correct, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're clarified. Now, with that, is there any meat in that table? Michael?
Yes. Would that will go for, if the motion passes, that'll go to council with that recommendation. And with that being a positive recommendation, we would amend our recommendation to include that as well. I think that would be, maybe foolish not to. And hopefully, council would accept that in their consideration as well.
Well, we are really working Robert's rules of order over here pretty good, fellows. We don't have a second on it, we can discuss it, we can have discussion if we have a second. Because we have a second, we don't have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Now, we can, you can accept an amendment based on what Mr. Rice has said.
On clarification, this is the first of two public hearings. The final decision is made at the city council level, is that correct, based upon our approval or disapproval?
Correct. If, however y'all choose to vote, it has the opportunity to go to council with either a recommendation for approval or a recommendation for denial. And then they would make the final decision.
Thank you, sir. Just needed to clarify for the record.
We can clarify-
So, even if we decline it, it still goes to council?
It can.
Yes, if the applicant-
Well, is that a yes or a no? It can?
It's based on the applicant. And generally, half the time, the applicant will choose to continue to city council, sometimes they'll choose to go ahead and withdraw it, so.
When we, whatever we do, we can pass on it. If we approve it, it will go. If we turn it down, the applicant still can take it. Okay? Now, regarding this motion, this motion, as I understand it for clarification purpose, we had an artist's rendering of a store that the applicant showed us. And what I'm hearing is, is that this motion includes that the store should be constructed as that artist's rendering has been printed to, presented to us, is that correct?
Correct.
I don't think there's any conflict about really what the business looks like. I understand what you're saying.
Well, the reason why I'm doing that, chief, is that the applicant, you know, if the applicant doesn't accept it, then it's kind of a mute thing on our end.
Not necessarily. You can make any recommendation and it's, and then if they choose not to do it, then the project didn't happen.
Exactly. And we've spent this much time in trying to make this thing work, I wanna try to make it come out the way we're trying to make it come out. We've taken the time and then the applicant has given me the thumbs up that he's okay with that. So, you're okay with that, right?
Yes, sir, I'm okay for you to add that to that.
Okay, all right. Okay. It's just much easier to make sure that we all understand what we're doing. Okay, it's been moved and second, we've had discussion, any more discussion? There not be?
May I see, sir?
It's been-
I had a question, that's all right. I'm fine.
Okay. It's been moved and second that we approve application PD 17-03 with the condition that the rendering that was presented to us here tonight be what the applicant will construct. Moved to second. Ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All those in support, please raise, all those in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. The application is denied.
One of order, you don't vote unless it's a tie.
Okay. All those in favor?
There was.
There was. That's during my voting.
Well, I mean, we're butchering Robert's rules, so.
Well, and I think for the bylaws, the chair actually is a member and gets a vote. So, we don't necessarily follow Robert's rules to a tee because those are intended for larger boards.
So, what just happened?
What has happened is we had four votes in support of passing the application and we had five votes in opposition. So, the application did not pass. The motion failed to pass it.
So, it's up to him whether he goes to city council?
Yes, he can still go to city council. Okay?
And can I make a comment just real quick? And it's based on Mr. Rice's comment about getting us to this point. I do wanna let you know that we have made significant changes in our process so that this doesn't happen again. We're actually going back and pulling all of the zoning ordinance changes from the beginning of time and pulling all of those restrictions and making notes and so forth. So, we inherited an incomplete map and we'll own that one. But I will say that I'd be willing to bet we'd still be here because they do have the opportunity to rezone and request those restrictions to be removed.
You have time to get that done by next month?
No, but we're working diligently on it, so.
Staff update?
All items that went to council were approved last month.
Okay. Any additional citizen comment? There being none. Thank you all for coming, thank you for being patient, thank you for your order of this and your participation. The meeting now stands adjourned.